And I'm going to call our weekly meeting of the Cottington County Commissioners. To order, and it is Tuesday, April 14th. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Troy will try to have you lead us.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is call for public comment during this COVID-19 event. We would ask the public to call in using two numbers, 882-6297 and 882-6288. And then we will check during the open portion of our meeting and see if anyone has called, and we will give them a call back if there's anything that anyone in the public wants to address the Commissioners on. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Actually, let me back up. We are streaming live as well, so if anyone is going to address this, they would ask to come up to the mic, which will be just our department heads at this point, and just for the general public, that we are streaming our meetings live, Cottington County on YouTube. Item number three, conflict of interest items on the agenda. Is there any conflict of interest items for any of the Commissioners?
No.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the agenda.
I would ask for a exec session. We will need an exec session for personnel issues.
Yep, we already had one of those as well, so, all right. That sounds good, then we have a motion by Gable, and a second by Troy.
Yep.
Okay. So is there any other additions? Seeing none, all in favor, okay, all in favor say aye. I need to, I'll mention, we have Commissioner Van Duzen and Commissioner Johnson via teleconference in, so I will ask for a roll call vote from those two individuals. So Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson? All right, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the minutes of the April 7th, 2020 meeting.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Waterman. Any additions to that? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries as well. Item number six, monthly reports. We'll start with the auditor.
Basically, what we are scrambling to get done right now is to get our ballots ready. Due to some delays with checking statewide petitions and petition challenges on the states, and we did not get our certification for ballots until Thursday. My local candidates, everything was ready to go there April 1st, but on the state's end, there were a few issues that, out of their control, that they had to work with. So we got our ballot certification on Thursday. I came in Friday morning and prepared my ballot styles and emailed those to our printing company about seven o'clock last night. I got the proofs to look at. I was able to proof all of those things and print those out at home, sign off on my ballot proof, so our ballots have been ordered, they've been approved and ordered, so hopefully we will have them by Friday when we are supposed to send out the first batch of early voting. The other place, the other thing is my polling places. Right now, I'm not sure what's going to happen with my big polling place at the Extension Building. It's been looked at, the building has been looked at by the Army Corps of Engineers as a backup hospital or shelter, I'm not sure exactly what they're calling it. Nobody has advised me yet on whether or not they've decided to use that building, so I'm just kind of waiting, and I'm trying to get some other places lined up. The other thing is, we're going to need election workers, and we are going to start calling those soon. We are going to be able to provide gloves and masks to our election workers. We'll have to set up some kind of admittance into our big polling place, you know, to let just so many people in at a time. This is, you know, 45, 46 days out yet, but that's basically what we are working on right now, is getting things ready for the June primary election. There are, there is a statewide Democratic ballot, Cottington County ballot for presidential candidates, even though Mr. Sanders has suspended his campaign, he chose to leave his name on the ballot in states that had not held their primaries yet. So it, there is Biden and Sanders will be on the Democratic ballot. And then we do have a couple of local races for county commissioner and legislative candidates. We also have a U.S. Representative and a U.S. Senate race, and a local legislative race in the House in Cottington County, all on the Republican side. The only thing on the Democrats' ballot in Cottington County is the presidential contenders.
I will add too, there still has not been a for sure definite about the extension. That still is in the works with the Army Corps of Checking that all out. So as soon as that is determined, you will definitely be.
All right.
Madam Chair, just kind of make a point, this while we're on elections, just to encourage people to go to the Cottington.org website, and if, it would help us if people could mail in their ballots. So the idea there is to allow for increased social distancing on, at the polling places on June the 2nd. So that's the idea there.
And the other thing is, the Secretary of State's office did put out a press release that they are sending applications to every registered voter in the state of South Dakota. It's up to that voter then to get that application with a, either notarized or with a copy of their approved identification, photo identification, to their local county auditor, and at that time, we would be able to mail a ballot out. We have, we have started receiving a few applications, and I believe the Secretary of State's mailing will go out between the 17th and 24th of April, from the press release that I have seen.
Is there an opportunity for individuals to change their political party at this point?
Yeah, that, you can change your political party up until May 18th for this election. You can get the form online, print it out, it does have to be returned to the local election official by 5:00 p.m. on May 18th. It can be mailed back in Cottington County, or it can be dropped off in our drop box in the back parking lot, but it does need to be the original form.
All right, so if it's postmarked the 18th?
No.
Okay. It has to be here.
In the office, yeah. By 5:00 p.m. on May 18th, you cannot mail it in with a postmark.
Okay.
Madam Chair? Cindy, I, thank you for everything that you've done. This is really going to be a difficult time for, I've had a couple of calls from some elderly people this week, and it's really confusing for them, so is there any way, I mean, we just have to keep the public announcements, is there any way we could do a PSA on any of this procedure and how they can vote? Troy, is there something that we could do to just really keep those communications open in reference to this?
I would suggest, if they have any questions, have them call the auditor's office directly, that probably would help for some of that as well, but yes, go ahead and try.
Myron, the Secretary of State, like you just said, did come out with a media release, and we've had it on, and I know the other radio stations have as well. As it, as time gets going here, we'll have to do something else, I think, but no matter how many press releases we put out, there's going to be confusion, but I think that we'll do the best job that we can on our end to get those out.
Does that mean I turned my radio on?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
Actually, last night, I was watching a cable channel, and the announcement came over to encourage people to vote by mail. I don't remember what cable channel it was, it was not a local, it's not one of the local channels, but the announcement did come on there too.
We probably could maybe work with the city and get it on GovTV. Some sort of announcement or something.
If you'd like a copy of that release, I can sure forward that to you as well, to your emails, so that you can pass it on to your constituents.
That would be great.
Thank you.
Forward it to you.
All right, thanks, Troy. Any other comments, or Cindy, you have any more?
Nope, that's basically what we're working with right now, is this week we're working on bills and working on getting our ballots ready to go.
Sounds good, thank you. Next is the Director of Equalization. We do have Shawna here, so I would invite her to come and give her report.
Nope.
You can turn them.
Hello.
Good morning.
We are working on getting ready for boards. We are going to have our county board meeting next Tuesday at 1:00 p.m. here. I am going to need Brenda and two other Commissioners to make that board, and then the Consolidated Board will be meeting that evening, also the 21st, next Tuesday at 6:00 at City Hall, and I will need two Commissioners plus Brenda for that meeting. I have a total of 14 appeals for county board. Most of them are in the reappraisal area, Elmira Township, and then some in Compeska, which was last year. And then for Consolidated Board, we only have about seven. I have contacted everyone via letter, asking for phone numbers to give them a call, and email addresses, so that we can email any information that needs to get to them, and then I'll be calling each of them and going over what we're going to do. They're all going to, basically, we're going to call them, the board is going to be present, but we're going to call them and via telephone, teleconference, they're going to give their appeals.
So we won't have anybody in person?
We will not have anybody in person unless they absolutely, unless there's someone that absolutely can't, you know, call in or whatever. I'm hoping that's not the case, but we'll find that out this week.
So I think we should decide now, who, which two Commissioners will come at 1:00, and then which two Commissioners will come to City Hall at 6:00, so.
This is Myron. A lot of them are coming from Elmira Township, that's right next door to me here. I'm sure a lot of them are my neighbors here, so I would do the 1:00.
Okay, Myron will do 1. Do we have someone else who would like to do the 1:00?
I can do 1:00 if that's.
All right, Charlie and Myron, and so then the 6:00 Consolidated, Troy and Lee, does that work for you, Troy?
It makes sense, since we're both from the city.
Since you're both city.
Yeah.
Kind of turned out that way. All right. Yep, all right, that's a good mix-up. Okay, you have anything else to report on?
As far as everything else, we are just working on the appeals and getting the boards, so then we'll start getting back to normal after this week, next week.
I think Commissioner Gable had a comment.
Just a question, so that's going to just, are we going to do that by virtual, by Zoom or Microsoft Teams with the city, at City Hall, or?
At City Hall, there is going to be a Teams meeting set up, just because Kristin, the Finance Officer, would like to do minutes via Teams. However, I just thought it would be way easier for the board members to actually be present, and then the appellant is going to be on the conference call. So all of the board members will actually be there, and then I will be there, only one of my office staff is coming with to keep traffic down, and then the appellants will be calling in.
We should be able to.
That's at 6:00?
Yes, at 6:00 at City Hall. Go to the side door, we're going to go right up to the City Council chambers. And I am working with Kristin on making sure everything's sanitized for all the board members that are going to be there, but sitting at that City Council table, you guys will be able to social distance, you know, four chairs apart, so I'm hoping everything will be, be okay there.
Because we'll have one school board member and then two city council members.
We will have one school board member, one city council member, and then three Commissioners on that board. We're going down to a quorum only.
Okay.
Sounds good. You have anything else for us? Or Lee, did you have anything else?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Shawna.
For the Community Health Nurse, they did send a report. Did all of you receive that with your packet? Should have probably been in there. I don't know, Cindy, is there anything you think we should highlight on?
Basically, this is a report of the first quarter stats on WIC cases, immunization cases, cribs for kids. There's a little bit of a narrative on the back. For WIC, they continue to offer all WIC services that are, that they normally do. The only difference is that all services are done at the phone, over the phone at this time, as the office is closed. Immunizations, they are referring all clients to the clinics that are still open for public immunizations. School services, they have completed the school contracts for next year. They continue to do baby care and prenatal education over the phone. Staffing, Cody has transitioned over for the time to help disease investigation calls with calls for COVID. Savannah has taken on duties of community health, of the community health, and there have been other nurses that are helping in the office as well. That's about it. The report was submitted by Cody Martin, Liza Lineman, and Savannah Price.
All right, and you would have received those in your packet. Did you have any other questions or concerns or comments? All right, so we will move on then to item number seven, action to approve the auditor's account with the treasure and note the register of deeds fees.
You know, I should have mentioned something during my report that I overlooked. If we could just jump back to that.
Sure.
We did receive a reimbursement for, from FEMA for the March 2019 blizzard. Our first reimbursement was $14,897. Of that amount, $13,381 goes to the Highway Fund, and $1,516 goes to the General Fund for our overtime services for maintenance and that type of thing. Then we also received a payment from the state of South Dakota. This is considered an alternative annual tax on wind farm property. This is for the 2019 nameplate capacity tax and production tax from Crown Ridge Wind LLC. And we received a payment in the amount of $8,099.61. Of that amount, $2,834.86 stays with the county. Waverly School receives $4,049.81 of that amount. Germantown Township receives $105.65. Leola Township, $316.94. Rawville Township, $70.43, and Waverly Township, $721.92, and that came from the Department of Revenue.
Madam Chair, quick question on that. So did the Department of Revenue say for what period of time that covered? Because I imagine that's, it sounds like it's a pretty small amount of time.
They did not. They just referred to it as the 2019 nameplate capacity tax and production tax.
So they weren't up and running till later last year, so it would have been just from...
A few weeks, maybe, it sounds like.
Yeah, not too long a time period.
But they do not give me a from and through on this.
It might be interesting if you, to know that, to maybe find that out, and then we could map out the revenues for, get an idea anyway.
There were 69 of 87 towers, is the way.
Do they have the percentage of the nameplate tax? Sometimes we get a certain percentage of that.
Waverly School District got 50% of it, the county got 35% of it, and then the townships, it looks like it was broken down based on the number of towers within townships. So Waverly Township has 41 of the 87 towers, and then Leola Township has 18 of the 87, Germantown, 6 of the 87, and Rawville, 4 of the 87. And this is the first payment that we have received.
Would you mind emailing me just that portion of the?
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay.
So, anyway, that will be to come, I guess, if they get the other projects. Every year, we will get a certain percentage of that name, and that's called the nameplate, nameplate tax, so, all right, thanks for that.
And it's just, I forget what the rate is, it's a certain, is it like $2 or $3 per?
It's a certain percent of the total amount, I think, of, of the wattage or whatever. It's, it goes to pier, and then it's called the nameplate. I want to say it's around that 20 to 23%.
I believe it's a dollar amount per megawatt. I'm not, I'm not sure, I can't remember, I can't remember now. But either way, it's just distributed the same, by the same proportions, just like property taxes, so.
And it's according to the towers, but I think it's somewhere in that 23% of that, so.
Just a question on Madam Chairman.
Yes.
On this tax thing and the nameplate, and I couldn't understand that, but as time changes and they put on a different tower head, which is more efficient and produces more electricity, is that nameplate going to be changed? Is that tax plate going to be changed also to increase revenue?
It, it all hinges on, you know, the amount that it generates, so I guess I don't know at this point.
Right now, it's based on that plate, right? Is that plate going to be changed if they, is that going to stay?
I don't know, that might be a Luke question when we talk to him.
I think it's based on megawattage, so, so if it changes the megawattage, so it, the tax is based on megawatts, so if that changes, then the tax will change.
Yeah.
Then they would have to change the tag.
I don't know if they're talking about, it's what they call it, you know, the physical nameplate, I'm not sure if that's really that important, but it's more the rating of the, of the NCL.
We'll still probably get that same percent, but the amount might change, you know, depending on the wattage of it.
The percentage ain't going to change, but the, but it's based on that plate.
I don't know, I guess I was thinking that that was just their determination. Yeah, Luke will be coming on, so we can maybe ask him that question. All right, so now, action to approve the auditor's account with the treasure. You want to go through that for us, please?
This is the cash and cash items, as the last business day in March 2020. The second or third page shows you where our cash balances are. We are very closely watching our revenues, because we have had a number of events that have been canceled at the Extension Center. We are returning deposits, and we will not see that revenue that we normally see unless they were able to reschedule. Property tax payments are due April 30th, and we'll be watching that closely to see how it compares to last year. Most, a lot of people have their property tax payments escrowed with their house payments, so hopefully that will give us some continuity in how our collections come in compared to previous years. And then we also have the register of deeds fees. For fees collected in the month of March, $24,146.20.
Look for a motion to approve the auditor's account with the treasure. Okay, who did that first? Was it between Lee and Commissioner Van Duzen?
I'll be the second.
Okay, Commissioner Van Duzen made the motion, second by Gable. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number eight, action to approve an inmate housing contract with Lake County. That was in our packet as well. Cindy, did you want to explain, or was that?
There's really nothing. This is just an ordinary inmate housing contract for out-of-county inmates. We do not have a lot from Lake County, but we did have an inmate who was sentenced in Lake County, but apparently is, lives closer to this area, and that's why there is a need to get a contract with Lake County.
The main thing, Madam Chair, on this is the rate of $85 a day. So that's, and that's what it is for all counties.
That is our current rate, yep.
So this is a matter of convenient, not convenience, but this is a matter of if an inmate is down there and he's from here.
And has a job here, and it works better, yes.
Yeah.
Be work released here.
Yeah, when, when work releases back, going again, then I would imagine that that would accommodate him better, it's better to have them working, all right.
Motion to approve that.
Move.
Got a motion by Van Duzen, second by Johnson. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries also. Item number nine, action on the matter of possibly closing Memorial Park Campground due to the COVID event, and we'll call Steve, our facility manager, to give us a little explanation first on which direction we may want to take on this. Thank you. And Steve emailed all of us on Saturday, so hopefully you had a little opportunity to read through and see what the state is kind of, what direction they're going, but Steve, I'll let you explain.
Okay, I had emailed Saturday and somebody out of what the game fishing parks are doing on their parks. I actually, in fact, talked to one of the managers yesterday, and they are going to keep things open, but they are going to close some of their facilities, meaning bathhouses and stuff. Currently, right now, they're going to keep their vaults, or might as to say, odd houses, but we had all have terms open, so they can at least have, at least for necessities, needs to take care of. My, and City Park is going to keep theirs open, they are going to close their bathhouses and showerhouses. They are going to limit their capabilities of personnel to come in, basically. Nobody can have tents and pop-ups. Currently, they're able to do it because they are on a first-come, first-served basis, so they can restrict. My proposal for Memorial Park would be, is close the bathhouses and the buildings and shelters, playgrounds and arcade, closed to the public. And then office will be open, but with no more than two customers at a time, and then follow state regulations of CDC guidelines. I do have on this sheet here of a couple, three proposals, though, is campground open, one set of restrooms in pavilion that includes, that has no showers. This is a bathroom only, it is up by the shop area, the personnel can randomly go in and sanitize that one periodically. This leaves the options then for some of the people that have already reserved with tents and pop-ups, giving them no restrictions, but having at least try to encourage the ones that have campers to utilize their own showers and restroom areas in their own, in their own units. The other option would be is campground open with nothing open, no restrooms or entities at all, and then of course, I have on here campground totally closed for the month of May. Now, my guidelines is, is we're going to look at this month by month, given the option, depending on what the COVID-19 conditions occur, and then continue for if we open totally up, or if we basically have to shut down entirely or whatever, and, and have an authorization for this for, to converse with the liaison and the chair to implement this immediately if need to be. And I guess it's up to you guys to discuss what your thoughts on this process is.
My only concern, if we allow one restroom open, I think someone would have to be in there cleaning every time somebody goes in and uses it.
And, and yes, that is the concern, but the thought is, is all these convenience stores and, and. Truck stops, grocery stores, are they going in every time that somebody comes in? I think the biggest thing would be is you have to just periodically make sure you randomly go through it five, six times a day at least. I think the biggest thing would be is you have to just periodically make sure you randomly go through it five, six times a day at least.
Yeah, I don't know.
But that's, that's, that's my thought on it, so.
Well, it's very difficult, in my opinion, to have the campground open and have no restroom facilities whatsoever. Then you're going to create more problems, which we won't talk about here.
My, my think is, is condensing to one only, and it's right by the, up by the shop and it's close by where they can randomly go over and watch. They have, what we have is a C3 machine. It's the same thing that was used out at the Extension Building. It's kind of like a little power washer, and it can be randomly sprayed down periodically during the day.
The other one, the closed for the month of May, we talked about this last weekend. What about Memorial Day weekend?
Yeah, that.
That falls in June, but.
Nope. Memorial Day weekend actually is in May, it's the 21st.
Okay.
Of May. Yep. Father's Day is, is June. Yeah, somewhere around there. Yeah. Some of them start pulling in already on Thursday.
Yep.
Till the 22nd, 28th, 29th, 30th.
That is the following weekend.
That is not Memorial Day weekend.
No. Actually, Memorial Weekend is probably almost close to the earliest, earliest that is possibly that's, that's on the records. It's very early.
It varies, okay.
Memorial Day is the 25th of May.
Yep. It is very early this year, which typically we might end up being cold.
Madam Chair, just a question.
Yes.
So, so Steve, to understand your proposal, then, it's, you're, you're proposing basically number one on your handout, which says the campground stays open, then you have one set of restrooms by the, by the shop.
Yep.
Open. And just like you discussed, you periodically, regularly, often.
Right.
Clean it. So, and does that mean every campsite is still open? So anybody that has a reservation could still keep it? Is that what you're?
Right, yep. That would be, that would be my proposal.
Water hookups be on where they're available?
Water hookups, we have, there's several sites that's full hookups and water hookups. I believe the only sites really that is no water hookups, and that's the tent area.
And the electricity.
Yep.
Electricity will be on.
Electricity pretty well will be on.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing that's really no electricity or, or water hookups of any sort, and that is actually the tent area itself, which is over by the shop area, anyway.
So with the state, for their facility and services, and, and I think when we decide this, we'll maybe go up to May 31st, and then we'll revisit it again for June.
Yes.
Probably. So with the state, they have available as needed, on an as-needed basis, up till May 31st, like cleaning the vault toilets, garbage removal, snow removal, cabin and lodge cleaning, dump stations open where possible, and staff making rounds periodically. Emergency numbers are monitored. The spaces that are closed through May 31st is the comfort stations, fishing, cleaning stations, drinking fountains, meeting rooms and visitor centers. So that's kind of where we're.
Pretty well, yes, that's basically. The biggest thing is, like I said, is, is we don't have capabilities to have, you know, a vault for, for using, is, is probably our thing out at the park. Which though, you know, it, it, for them to do the vaults, they have more through the park than what we will only have one facility just set for bathroom facilities.
Can be monitored that way.
Right.
You know what, I, Madam Chair, if I could say something here real quick, I, I just want to commend Steve. It seems like he's put a lot of thought into this. I don't have an issue with keeping one facility open as long as the staff out there is doing a good job of keeping it cleaned and sanitized. I mean, I don't see an issue with that. I think that's a good solution to, to curb in a problem that we're going to have if we don't have anything open, so.
I agree with that statement. This is my run.
So that would be, we'll, we'll go with, we're all kind of in agreeance then with option number one. The campground is open, one set of restrooms in the pavilion that includes no showers. And then all those items above mentioned will remain closed till May 31st.
Right.
And then we'll revisit it.
Yep.
With also the clause, though, an emergency sort of situation comes up. If Steve needs to make a decision before we're having a meeting, that the liaison and I would be in communication with him and be able to make that determination, and then it'll be brought forth to the rest of the board on what's happening. Is everyone okay with that?
I think that's option two, though, isn't it?
No, that's just all option one and just.
Well, it basically, it leaves it if, if need to be for closing it down entirely.
If something would come up.
Something, actually, we have a high increase, so that, so we basically limit anybody from, you know, contracting or exposing more people.
So we will be open for the month of May?
Yep. Yep, till May 31st, on a limited basis as far as one restroom. And all those other bathhouses closed, buildings, shelters, playgrounds, arcades will be closed.
Well, we get a lot of campers out that are self-contained.
There is a lot of campers. We do have a couple of them that are pop-ups and, and a couple tent. Certain currently right now that are reserved, so that for the month of May, especially Memorial Day weekend.
How will you close off the playgrounds?
Currently, right now, according to the regulations, is they have to turn around and put a yellow tape around. That would be, that was already discussed with the personnel, is we'll put stakes around the playground equipment and then post it with, with the tape around, or the yellow tape around.
I would think most of the citizens will probably be attuned to when they're seeing those sorts of things, what that means.
You know, yeah. And the, the biggest thing about it is, is, is you can put it around there. I guess is, it, it's at least the warning stating, doesn't say that they're not going to be kids or something that's going to go on there. At least it's been posted, it's been warned. And so, so.
Just a suggestion on that, Steve. I know the city, looking at their facilities and their parks, what they've done is they've actually taken like that barrier tape and wrapped it around like the swings and stuff, so they can't be utilized unless they cut the tapes. You know, if there's a, I don't know, like those domes that kids climb on and stuff, maybe just wrap that yellow tape around the dome itself and.
Right. We'll try to do as much as what we can to prevent people from trying to go and play on them and.
We will have our normal operating staff out there.
Yep, yep. We'll have our normal operating, operating staff. I know I had said and so we had on the one gentleman and so that, but I will put him on board and so that, so we have enough staff. Help monitor plus, so that way the lawns and everything can keep, keep.
All right. So does some, someone want to?
I have two que, two questions. Just, one is, will we be contacting the people who have reservations just so they understand what's going on? That could be something that the new campground director spends a bit of time.
I think what we probably best, they have to actually go to the office to actually check in before they go in anyway. That's according to the rules of the campground. So they're to let know. And so we had, you know, and I think we'll have to have, actually make a rules, or, you know, type up some rules, basically stating these are facilities are not open, and hand it to them for their handouts when they, when they arrive.
Would it be beneficial, maybe, is there contact numbers to let them know this beforehand? That if they decide then they don't want to come and if they're coming from a distance and?
Right. Currently, right now, there are some that are already dropping out because of it, you know, they're, they're, you know, and, and that's well deserved and so that and stuff to, for them. I guess there is contact information that we could let them know.
Yeah.
Of this.
We should let them know what we're going to allow, and then they can decide if they want to.
Right.
Or not, rather than coming from a distance and then finding out they might be unhappy.
Because, yeah, we do have, there are people that are North Dakota, Sioux Falls, clear down by Yankton.
Right.
So this, this could be a significant change to the camping experience for some people, so.
Yes.
I think it might be good if, for those that we can contact, especially if it's an email or you can just send out an email to everybody at once, at least to do that much. And then the other, the other question I had was, I noticed the state guidance also is they're, they're keeping all the walking trails and as long as you keep your social distance, all that kind of thing, that's still open.
Right.
So I, I would make a motion then to, to take Steve's option one, to, to leave the campground open with one set of ref, restrooms in the pavilion or park, park office open that includes no showers.
And then all the.
And then the closure of the other.
Closure of the things.
And the closure of the playgrounds, et cetera, as Steve mentioned.
Commissioner Gable, did you want to add to that motion? That the liaison and the chairman, chairperson would.
In an emergency situation, if something would arise.
In our emergency process.
That we don't have time to call a meeting together in an emergency meeting?
I will, I will, I will add that to my motion so that you have, so the chair has the opportunity to make changes and the liaison and the chair have the opportunity to make changes in the event of an emergency.
If, yeah, in an emergency situation, and this is just up till May 31st, and then we'll revisit this. If that's okay.
So moved.
All right.
Second.
Second by Waterman. Any other discussion? My run or Troy?
No, I'm good.
No, I'm good.
With that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes as well. Thank you, Steve, for all your work and we'll just kind of roll with this one. Item number 10, action on an application to discharge fireworks for a commercial product demonstration. And that was in the packet as well. Cindy, do you have anything to add to that?
Nope, I received these, this from the Watertown Fire Department. Chip sent this to me. It's a demonstrator meeting scheduled for, or demonstrator, demonstration for fireworks retailers, I'm sorry, scheduled for May 2nd from 8:00 PM for thirty minutes, which would be a Saturday evening. This is something that they have done before. That's all I have.
Yep. It's for loose fireworks. It is within the city, so I would guess they're going to monitor the parameters on that as we get closer as to their regulations or rules that they're going to have.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Van Duzen. Do I have a second? Second by Gable. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, all, that motion carries as well. Item number 11, action to accept a revised Delta Dental insurance premium. Cindy, if you would like to give us the good news on that.
Uh, last week I received, after we took action to approve our renewal increases with Delta Dental, I received an email from Delta Dental asking if we would be opposed to leaving our premiums at the same rate for another year. I said, no, that sounded like a good idea to me, and we just need board action to approve our rates remaining the same for another year.
Approve.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Item number 12, discussion, possible action regarding to commission virtual meetings. How is it going for you guys that are not here today? Is everything seem to be, you're able to hear and, and partake in the meeting, okay?
Yeah, it sounds really good on my end here.
Yeah, it sounds good on my end. It's going well.
All right. That's good to hear.
Maybe we ought to just keep doing this.
There, there's certain advantages, I mean, to, so we, we got the, the adapter that I was missing last week. That's what made the, all the difference, and they, that came into a local business on Wednesday, the day after last week's meeting. And then the, one thing we probably need, right now, this is just a monthly subscription to Zoom, so we might want to think about this for a year. You save a few bucks if you do it for a whole year. I kind of like this. This is also a good way to stream on YouTube because you can, you can share the documents, so people can see, the public can see the agenda or whatever document we're talking about much more easily than they can if, you know, as, just looking at the TV screen on the video in the room, like we were doing before. So we might want to make this our regular streaming. You know, even if we're all present here, this might be a good, good way to do, do that anyway, so.
Yes, I would agree. I've heard comments that it's much more user-friendly. They can hear, they can see everything. I've had compliments on that process.
Yeah, so, so maybe, I'm guessing it would cost less, an annual subscription is probably going to be less than $300, but I'm still, I'll study that a bit and, you know, I don't think it's that big of an expense for, for the advantages, so.
Right, especially if our public starts, you know, tuning in on the YouTube now, knowing with all this and the processes that they maybe weren't aware of before, so. All right. Anything else that anyone wants to add about that? All right. Item number 13, discussion, possible action on a, any COVID-19 practices and procedures. I don't really have any this week. I think so far, we're kind of rolling along with everything. Luke will be calling in during the open portion. He'll have something to discuss with us that will somewhat relate to COVID practices on.
Luke is going to try and join in on Zoom. He's got another conference call at 9:30, so we're supposed to kind of. If he, if he doesn't call in, he's going to try and watch the meeting until then, and if he doesn't call in, we're supposed to kind of give him a nudge.
Okay. Well, and maybe he can kind of jump in whenever it works for him, I guess, if.
And I do have his phone number. We could call him and tell him to go ahead and join.
If he's having trouble getting in, I can jump, I need to jump up and let him in. I already emailed him, so I, I emailed him the invitation.
Ignore your, that text.
Oh, okay. I was just going to tell him he can jump in whenever he wants. That's all. I just thought I could text him. I'll just let him know that whenever it works for him, he's free to join us. All right, then, while I'm doing that, we'll move on to item number 14, action to approve claims for payments. Cindy, do you have some explanations?
Um, not a lot. In the court-appointed attorney budget, we are 40% spent, which is much higher than we would like to be at this time of year. The catastrophic legal payment is being made for $11,879. If those payments continue in that amount, we may have to supplement that budget because I believe we only budgeted $40,000 for that line item. In the government buildings budget, our second payment for the fire suppression system is in there for $12,312.28, and it does sound like the workforce for that project is on hand this morning. There was not anything else, a lot of out of the ordinary, the total claims to the state of South Dakota for motor V and birth certificates, death certificates and marriage licenses was $436,194.19. The county's share of the claims was $618,475.75.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gable. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Van Duzen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries also. Item number 15, action to approve automatic budget supplements. Do we have any of those, Cindy?
Uh, none today. We have no, yeah, no automatic budget supplements. I do have a personnel change for Stanley, who is a seasonal weed sprayer. He'll go to step five, 1627, starting May 1st.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Gable. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Van Duzen?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number 17, action to approve travel requests.
Um, nothing today.
All right. Item number 18, public notices, that we probably won't have anything for a little while. Does anyone have anything for 19, old business? Seeing none.
Madam Chair, if, just going back to the, the mail-in ballot request, just, just to emphasize, you know, with the, your, your mention of a need for a PSA, just if anybody's watching or watches the YouTube stream, if they want to go to the cottingdon.org website, there's a lot of information there, right on the, on the welcome page. You can take a look there and go to the, there's a, there's a link. See, Luke's trying to get into the meeting. There's a link for what bills, what business people can do without having to visit the courthouse, and so, and that includes. what bills, what business people can do without having to visit the courthouse and so, and that includes, there's also some instructions on mail-in ballots there. So just, uh, just want to emphasize that to folks.
All right, we're getting Luke on board here. Good morning Luke, can you hear us?
Luke, can you hear us?
My screen shows that he's still connecting.
Okay, I'll turn off the screenshot.
Good morning, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning Luke. Um, so I guess, okay, I will give you the floor then to explain to the rest of us what your thoughts are or what you would like to talk to us about today, and I know we have a question maybe also on the wind towers and the nameplate, if you know of any of that. But I'll let you start with what you wanted to say first.
Sure, uh, good morning Commissioners, thanks for letting me, uh, approach you today. Uh, I did not get a chance to get on the agenda earlier and frankly, that's probably okay, so that I could just discuss this. Uh, I've had a lot of requests, um, I'm not going to say abnormal, but quite a few, uh, requests for plating of property at this time, um, in the last six, uh, sorry, about three to five weeks. And of course, with the meeting requirements that here we sit, um, in our own living rooms or wherever it is that we are trying to run meetings. A question was brought to me by one of the, actually two of the surveyors that are involved in the Platts, wondering if it's possible for Cottington County to, if not on a full-time basis, just on an emergency, short-term basis, to allow the zoning officer the ability to administratively approve Platts that meet the subdivision requirements? Uh, or were ordered by the Board of Adjustment, uh, to be completed, otherwise in accordance with the subdivision requirements. And what I'm getting at here is I have, I, I have one individual who I know is looking to sell two tracts of land, both of which are 35 acres. It's just that they're, you know, goofy shaped, we'll call them. And then I've got a couple others that would be able to, um, get building permits, however, they've got farmstead exemptions and they have to create a five acre lot to finish that step off. And the reason why it would be a, something we would, we would possibly handle here is that we are going to, um, with the COVID, uh, situation we have here, we're going to limit meetings, we're not going to cancel them if we have requests for Board of Adjustment. However, I am not planning, unless the Board tells me otherwise, I'm not planning on running, uh, a meeting solely to handle Platts, unless we have to, um, I'd have to reevaluate that if you tell me to do this differently, but it would be possible, state law does allow the, the county commission to grant the authority to approve Platts to an administrative official. We do have other counties and municipalities that do that in the planning district. Uh, Cottignan County has not done that, I know that we talked at the planning commission about maybe doing it on a very limiting, limited scope going into the future. Um, however, I don't want to trample on that idea, um, to, I don't want to expand that more than the planning commission is comfortable with. But in the same breath, for the short term here where we've got things that follow the rules here, maybe it may make sense, uh, say for a, um, a three-month period to allow that ability of the zoning officer. And I'll take any questions on how, what, where, why, um, that would come up from any of you.
Madam Chair, I move to, uh, allow Luke, uh, to go ahead with this process.
Lee, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
Well, um, the, uh, question, is there something that prohibits to, uh, prohibits us from doing this virtually like we're doing now? As far as the commission approving Platts, I mean, it'd be easy to project the, the, you know, the, the, the maps and everything so we could see it. Um, the, uh, or is it an issue of the planning commission, just, it's just, it's, I guess, a, a, a plat is a small enough thing? Or can we group the Platts together and maybe not meet as often? Um, just so I understand all, all the issues at, at play.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question, I, I will, I will tell you that I was, I was, uh, more concerned, uh, before we had the ability to, um, run our meetings this way, um, as far as running, running things virtually as, as you are here, uh, Mr. Gable, but, um, I, I still does slow things down, as I said, running a meeting, it's more about getting all of the members on board specifically. Now, don't get me wrong, we are going to figure out ways to handle some of these folks, but I've got two members that, that, uh, don't have an email address on the board, so the bottom line is we get, get some of them set up in order to do so. Um, but like I said, getting things together for a plat, um, be a small-term sort of a deal and honestly, it, it would be easier, faster, would make more sense probably just to do it, um, just to do it as, as they come up and handle that, rather than have to track down an individual to get things signed and notarized and that sort of thing, we just have one be done. I.
Okay, I, I guess I'm okay with that, if that's, if that's a, um, so do we need some, can we act on this now as an, as an emergency? Or should we delay a week and just?
No, we have to, we will still have to do first reading, second reading, the only reason I'm here today is that I, it would be improper for me to initiate this process myself.
Right.
And so I, I wanted to make sure that you were okay with me drafting something, we will still have to, um, do first, second reading, but I wanted to get cranking on this, um, so that we could possibly have something in place by the first of May and handle it that way, um, because we'll have to do first, second reading and then publish it, and it'll become effective upon publication, which I think, following the next couple of weeks.
Effective upon publication or upon adoption?
Um, I believe with, I believe on the emergency adoption of temporary zoning and, and land use controls, it goes upon a, a publication, not adoption.
Okay.
I'd have to double check that, I, I recited that last Thursday and I've already forgotten, so I gotta double check it.
Initially, you said it, it was effective upon adoption, but, and that's what, that's the email I'm looking at, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think it's upon publication, so I was probably wrong.
All right.
So, so Madam Chair, one, one more question, so the thing, the thing we're talking about is, uh, the temporary emergency ordinance, that's the.
That's what we should be taking action on, is to authorize Luke to prepare. If temporary. The temporary, um, emergency subdivision ordinance.
And that was what my motion was.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Van Duzen.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Luke, uh, while we have you here, we kind of were in a discussion, Cindy read off, um, some of the, uh, statistics that we have received from the nameplate tax, um, coming back to the county from the Crown Ridge to Wind Project. Um, Commissioner Waterman had a question, I guess, I wasn't really sure how to answer that, and I don't know if you'll be able to, but I'll maybe let him ask you and see if you have more information than I do.
Well, right now, uh, Luke, they pay the taxes off the generation plate or tax plate, whatever.
Nameplate.
Nameplate, uh, if they change tower heads and they produce more power, will that nameplate be replaced and those taxes increased, or is that a PUC problem?
Um, both, uh, it was explained to me, it was explained to me that that is based on their ability to produce power. So if they somehow do something that allows them to expand their ability to produce power, um, that would increase the, the nameplate capacity and therefore, um, the county would get additional tax revenue on that basis, that is.
And I, excuse me, I, I realize that at this point in time, we're looking into the future, uh, rather than the present, but, uh, that's why I was questioned and why I had a question on it.
I, I do want to, I do want to caveat my statements that I am by no means an expert on that, that's how it was explained to me, but I will give you one example. Uh, there was a time when Crown Ridge, the, uh, the first version of them, they were debating, uh, internally about using, and all it would have been was a software change within the tower itself, that would have allowed them to create a, um, or more efficiently create electricity, essentially boosting their ability to, to generate electricity at each given tower. I don't know if, I'm betting they probably followed, you know, whatever. Bottom line was, that was explained to me that simply by doing things on a software basis, they could, they could boost that, but they'd have to report that to PUC that they're doing it and in turn be letting us know as they did that, so the bottom line is, is that, yeah, they'd have to report that back to the PUC, I'm aware of that, so that's, that's my understanding of it.
Thank you, Luke.
Yep.
Thank you Luke, does anyone else have any questions for Luke while we still have him or ready to turn him loose? All right.
I, I will give you, I do want to give the board just an update because as odd as it has been trying to, to function, um, I have taken to trying to get back to people, um, whenever I get a chance to, given that I'm working, uh, out of here. Uh, however, same as before, the, um, if someone wants to get ahold of me, they're welcome to contact the extension building uh, during that timeframe and we're relaying and I'm calling people back, same thing, calling the first district office, 882-5115, they can. We are issuing building permits and for anybody, for the commissioner's knowledge and anybody else's knowledge, um, we're doing our best to keep it that where you may have gotten your building permit in three days before. It, it may be, it may be five now, um, but we're doing our best to get things turned around as quickly as we possibly can. I think what we are getting is, uh, more efficient submittals, so by the time someone drops off an application, uh, all that's left is just the stamp that it's approved because I, we've talked through it with the applicant, um, more by the time they get it to us, so. It's, I think it's been working so far, but I will admit that first week was a, quite a learning experience.
All right.
Thank you all.
Very good, thanks Luke, I have a, oh, Lee, uh, Lee has one more question.
We were talking about the name, nameplate tax, I was, I went to the Department of Revenue's website, so it's $3 times the number of kilowatt hours, I said megawatt hours, so it's $3 times the number of kilowatt hours of capacity. And that determines that how much the, the wind company's taxed, and then that amount, whatever that may be, is divided up just like property taxes. Depending on, you know, where the wind tower's located, school district and the townships, et cetera, so.
And that's regardless whether the wind blows or not.
Well, probably the wind would have to blow to, to turn it to get the kilowatts, I guess I had it explained to me a percent, maybe that equals to that percent of it, but either way, um, yeah, those are the proceeds that will be coming back to the county and the townships respectively. All right, anyone else have any other comments or questions for Luke? If not, we'll let you get back to your meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for joining in Luke.
Great.
Um, so that was basically new business, anyone else have any other new business?
Uh, new business or old business, I just want to say a thank you to the highway department, we had some flooding issues on, on, uh, County Road 19, and, uh, they, in very prompt action, were able to bring out two loads of gravel and acquire some sandbags and delivered them to the guy's place and helped to save a couple of his buildings.
Very good.
So thank you for that, and, uh, if anybody else has got a problem with flooding or something out in the country, uh, feel free to get ahold of us.
Yep, absolutely, we don't know sometimes, and so the public is our eyes and ears out there, so. Thanks to the highway department for reacting and helping that situation. Um, we'll move on to open, I guess I have one comment that I would make or a thank you needs to go to, um, Watertown Community Foundation and Cottington Clark Electric have, uh, taken on the task of paying for the printing of 211 flyers that will, um, be in the May billings, um, Watertown Municipal Utility Billing in May, and Cottington Clark Electric Patrons will also receive those 211 flyers in their bills for the month of May, so I would like to really thank those two um, entities for taking on that cost to do that, so thank you very much and appreciate their commitment to that. Anyone else have anything for the open? I wish to check and see if we have any people calling. All right, there was no individuals that have called in, so then we can move on to item number 22, which is action to enter into executive session on number one, discussion of personnel issues. So I'd look for, uh, there could maybe be some, possibly some action.
We, we have an action on the agenda.
When we come out, so, um, someone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
Motion by Gable, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Commissioner Johnson, I heard him, uh, Commissioner Van Duzen.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in executive session.